With issues surrounding the coronavirus issue.
Yes, sir.
And ongoing county operations. And our goal today is going to do what we can to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, protect our employees, and protect people that are doing business with the county. So with that, Mr. Oaks, if you would lead us through the first agenda item.
Yes, sir. It would be my pleasure. We'll begin under your Agenda Item 2A this afternoon, Commissioners, and that would be an update and a discussion of responses to the COVID-19 disease by your Public Health Department Director, Stephanie Vick, and your Director of Collier County Bureau of Emergency Services, Mr. Dan Summers. Dan?
For the record, good afternoon, Dan Summers, Director of Collier County Bureau of Emergency Services and Emergency Management. We sort of quickly put together a little outline for our presentation for you today. Stephanie Vick, our Director of DOH Collier, is going to give you an update on, from our health response perspective. I'm going to give you a quick update on activities associated around our preparedness strategies and response, and then we'll turn it back over to Mr. Oaks to talk about county operations. So Stephanie, if you'll come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Stephanie Vick, Department of Health. Okay, current situation right now in the state of Florida, there are 155 cases. And in Collier County, we have five resident cases and one additional from out-of-state case. So we have a total of six cases, but only five that are chalked up to us as a resident. But you still have to know that the other one person is here in our county. So as of then today, with that situation, we still do not qualify and classify as widespread community transmission, which is a good thing, but it can give you a false sense of security because we're only testing those that meet the criteria at the highest risk. So there could be people there with mild, minor symptoms that, or they don't have anything at all.
What is the criteria for being tested? Is that going to come up in a future slide?
Oh, wait a minute. It just was revised, so I brought it along so I could read it to you. Okay, so right now, the screening criteria is persons who have had a close contact with a laboratory confirmed COVID-19 case, persons hospitalized with acute lower respiratory illness or unknown, of unknown origin, history of travel to or from an affected geographic area with widespread community transmission, such as China, Italy, Iran, history in general of international travel or cruise, people that are older than 65, that have chronic health conditions, immunocompromised persons. And then if your clinician seems to think that still they're uneasy and you might have it, they still can order a test on you based upon their clinical judgment. But the clinicians are now being expected to do their own testing as much as they can and send it to private laboratories. Okay, so our, just also, people often wonder about these number of cases that we have coming up, and, you know, it keeps growing, growing, growing. We started with maybe five in the whole state of Florida, and now we're at 155. But just to bring some levity to that, yes, there are 155 cases who have tested positive, but there also are 760 people who have tested negative. So they've had the test and they're negative. You see the difference there? Okay. Also, though, and this speaks to how overloaded our system is starting to become, there are 568 tests out there pending, we're waiting for results on, not just Collier County, that's statewide. Okay. The current social behavior guidelines remain about the same. Individuals should stay six feet apart. Good job, Commissioners. Good job.
Bad job, you guys.
Yeah. Groups, and this is just to try to give people a standardized guideline. Groups should be less than 50 people. But I mean, if you're going to have 49 people, that's still frowned upon. That's the guideline, okay? You still want to do frequent washing of your hands with soap and water, but if that's not available, you still can use hand sanitizer, if you can find it, with at least 68% alcohol in it. If you have a cough or a sneeze, you should cover your mouth and nose with a tissue and throw it away immediately. And then you need to wash your hands or use the hand sanitizer. If you don't have a tissue, sneeze in the crook of your elbow into your sleep so that you cover your cough and it doesn't go to anyone else. Okay? And then avoid shaking hands, no handshaking. You need to bump fists, okay? Or slight bow, or you can do elbow bumps. If you can get close enough to do that, because you're trying to stay six feet away, right? Okay. I'm sorry.
Don't forget to move your slides.
Yeah. Okay. The people that are most at risk are still individuals that are over 60. It gets more at risk with each decade you're talking about, and people with comorbidities like heart disease, COPD, kidney disease, or other immunocompromised conditions.
Let me, I know we want to kind of get through the presentation without asking questions, but on this particular one, I feel compelled to ask a question. There is conflicting information. This says if you're over 60 with a comorbidity, then you should stay at home. I've seen reports that have said if you're over 60, or if you have immune issues, you should stay at home. So is the general consensus is that if you're, if you're over 60, but you're not, you don't have a comorbidity, that it's, what's the real guideline on that? If you're over 60, if you're over 70, what is, what's recommended?
Well, hence the reason that it gets worse each decade, you're more at risk. So a person that's healthy and 60 years old probably has less of a concern as someone who's 80 and has heart disease. But really, it's people that are 60 and over, and then you need to take into consideration your health level and stay at home if you are at risk.
Are 60-year-old people that do not have comorbidities, are they at risk?
Somewhat. That's why it's 60 and over. They are somewhat at risk, but not as much as a 70-year-old or an 80-year-old, and not as much as someone who is 60, or even someone who is 55, who has diabetes, heart disease, anything else that would be debilitating to them. 60 is, it's kind of like the 50 age group, or 50 group size. It's a guideline, and it helps most people to decide who should be at risk, but it's not a hard and fast rule. You can have a 70-year-old who has a heart like a 20-year-old racer and no other issues going on, and they will probably, if they got the disease, will probably do as well as someone in their 20s or 30s. But 60 is the general guideline. Does that help? Okay. The plan right now is to continue testing, and that's the plan in Collier County, with the help of the hospitals and our private providers, and to continue contact investigation of those who are testing positive. That's not an easy feat. One positive person could have at least 20 contacts that we're having to follow up on. Okay? Our community education, we began where we were going to do education within specific communities as requested. We have stopped that. We are going to a virtual format. Okay? We do have challenges right now with this going on. Testing supplies are running low. Even we, as a health department, had to search statewide because we requested supplies from the state, and they did not have them to send to us. So we scrounged and we went to Pinellas County Health Department, who helped us with 25 tests. I've also put out a request with our private providers that if any of them have a testing media, that they could share with us, you know, just give us one or two per provider so that we can get through until deliveries come through. And they are expected to come in later this week. But we're not the only area that is very short on testing supplies. The hospitals are as well. So there's something to be aware of. Personal protective equipment, some things like face shields are getting low. We still have goggles and face masks and those things, but whole face shields, which we prefer in some cases, we have very little left. And those things have also been requested from the state level and are not yet available. We continue, the health department, your health department continues to receive general referrals from their offices because they're unable to do the testing. The guidance has just come out from Surgeon General Rivkey's indicating that if you're a private provider, you need to be able to do your tests. Some of them don't even have the equipment, and then the people come to us. But with what the hospital's doing, NCH is doing testing to help people that have privileges at their hospital, and people have to have a prescription from those doctors to get that testing done. But that should help take some of the load off of us, too. Our contact investigations, as I said, we're beginning to get overloaded. I'm shifting staff around. We may just go to minimal service levels so we can pull everyone just to take care of the COVID-19. We set up a local phone bank for providers and for people who are ill and need to get tested, but those also are getting overloaded. So that's another reason why I will probably bring us down to very minimal service levels. In rumor? Pardon me?
That's your slide.
Oh. Sorry.
When you say they can contact us, what does that mean?
Contact our health department?
Is that the health department?
Right. Contact the health department at our epidemiology number, or at our main number during the day, and the phone tree will direct them to the right place.
Someone calls you up and they say, you know, "I've got a cough, I'm having a little difficulty breathing." What do you tell them? What is?
The first thing we tell them is, is that they, have they checked with their private provider, and have they asked whether they can be seen at their private provider? Then the providers will contact us.
If they have no provider?
And if they have no provider, then we will help them determine who would be able to be a provider, like Healthcare Network of Southwest Florida might be an adequate provider, the Neighborhood Health Clinic. It just depends on the situation.
When you mention those two potential providers, are they aware that you're going to be referring folks to them, or are they all set up for this?
They are aware that we may be referring people to them as a provider in the community, yes. They, we've been doing community calls with partners for at least four weeks now, and so discussing some of these issues.
So people that do call you will find a way to get some care?
Yes. If they are symptomatic. If people are just calling because they're worried well and they just want information about COVID, we are referring them to the State Information Line, which is open seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Now, we've gotten some reports back from people who say they've, they've called that number and they've waited for an hour for someone to get to them. I think like any other business, there are peak times where many, many people would call, you know, at their lunch break or 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I think people need to have some patience and try to call back a little later. Okay? Okay.
What is rumor control? You, under the previous slide, you talked about rumor control.
Rumors that there are positive cases in different facilities, and people should be careful of going, going there. When we have positive cases, they are posted, but we do not give the address of people's homes or facilities to protect confidentiality of our citizens. Okay? I think that's it. Any other questions?
Commissioner, can I, how do you do, Ms. Steph?
Oh, good.
I asked you last week about the, the tests, and speaking of rumor control, who's, is Lee County doing drive-by testing? I had heard, again, a rumor that Lee County was setting up with drive-by testing. Is that a fact or not?
In one case, in one location.
One location. And so...
But again, you also have to have a prescription. You have to have an order for that.
Got to have a doctor's order to drive by.
And an appointment there.
Okay. So, and, and you, you said last week that, because, because again, and again, we're all, we're all trying to apply a little bit of common sense to this very dynamic circumstance, but mass testing would assist with the control of the outbreak as it's going along. The more opportunity we have to test, those who think they might be, would be, would be a huge benefit. And last week, we were hoping to get the lot of tests this, by the end of last week, and now we're talking about the end of this week. Is, is, and I understand, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything, it's just the latest and greatest with regard to the availability of the, of, of those test kits, test kits.
Right. We can only report to you about when the test kits are here, as the Department of Health at the state level tells us, and they can only report to you as to what the CDC and the federal government have said.
And that will suffice as an answer, and I, I got it.
Okay.
Commissioner Taylor?
How long from the time someone gets a test today, not yesterday, but today, do they get a result?
In general, it's within 48 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want.
Okay. And Commissioner Fiala, if you have a question, just shout out at some point.
No, I don't. Thank you anyway.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Dan Summers, just to give you a little rundown from the different county divisions, who are certainly leaning forward with all of this, and I'll just hit Administrative Services, and you're familiar with all the departments within that particular division. Obviously, our administrative actions include documentation efforts that are associated with the Stafford Act and the Presidential National Emergency Declaration. We're learning more information about that. The virtual and telephonic meetings and being able to work business remotely, emergency procurement policies, we talked a little bit about that last week, ongoing public information efforts, including outreach to Spanish-speaking radio outlets. We've, we're working on that mission today to make sure with the two low-power stations in Amocley, we're getting some information out. Working through administrative scheduling, workforce activities, and flexible scheduling, as well as preventative measures in, in public areas. So, and again, that's overlap from a couple of divisions. Our Public Services Division, I won't read all of those bullets there, but through the County Manager's Office directing, and a lot of these groups or leagues, if you will, have counseled on their own, okay? Just because that's what they wanted to do if they were a Little League sponsor, those type of things. And I know the Deputy County Manager is familiar and can add to that. But they, our Parks and Recs folks, those forward-facing organizations supporting the community are certainly leaning forward with all of their protective measures. Library programs and presenters are voluntarily counseling, and senior, senior congregate meals certainly move to home delivery activities. And again, Steve Carnell is here if you have any additional questions. Dr. Yelvez, and our Public Utilities Division, as you would expect it, with their continuity of operations planning quite detailed, I, I realize that's an eye chart with a lot of information on it, but they're in very, very good stead with all of their operations and taking the protective actions, especially at plant operations, to make sure that those activities continue, as well as our wastewater and garbage services.
Commissioner Daniel has a question?
I'm sorry, sir, excuse me.
You, you are force-feeding with a fire hose, and I want to assure the folks that this information is going to be online and going to be rebroadcast on a regular basis. So if you just would say that again.
Okay.
For, for, for the people that are watching in the news, that, that there's a lot of information here that people need to be aware of.
There is, and, and I think that the, the short answer there is that there's no interruption of services and continuity of planning, continuity, operational planning is, is ongoing if needed.
Let me ask you a question in reference to continuity of services as well. Assuming, let's just for purposes of this question, let's assume kind of the worst in terms of, you know, pretty much everything is shut down. I've, I've always assumed that services such as water services, sewer, sanitation, garbage pickup, electricity, those things would be continuing no matter what, that we don't have to worry. You see people hoarding, you know, cases of water. We're not going to have a situation where there's a problem with electricity, with water and sewer service and garbage collection. Is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate for the utilities that we control, certainly.
Right, understood. Okay. Commissioner Taylor?
Just, this is sort of, you know, a woman's question, but I was reading on the Florida Department of Health about EPA cleaning, cleaning supplies. Will you tell me what the bright line is between what I have underneath my sink and what EPA cleaning supplies are?
Let me bring Stephanie up as well. My understanding is above the 68% alcohol is certainly an activity or an option, and then our traditional household cleaners, I think the only difference is how much wait time they need for part of that disinfecting. So Stephanie, if you want to clarify on that, but my understanding is the majority of your household materials will do that cleaning, especially if they're bleach-related. The difference is the amount of time necessary to kill the virus. And in most cases with over-the-counter or typical retail things that we would buy at home, the difference is that you want to allow that a little time to soak, and I'll let Stephanie clarify.
Really, everything that Dan's been saying is correct. There is a, a website that has the approved cleaning materials, and I will provide that for you so that you can put it online, the public can get. But everyday Clorox that most people have in their houses will kill the virus.
Thank you.
Okay?
Our Growth Management Division, as well as counseling, and I'm sure they'll be posting a whole lot more information on this through all of our social media and news releases, but canceling those neighborhood information meetings, collaborating on any traffic issues and supporting the, any of the drive-by testing. We spoke with the Sheriff's Office this morning. We know that Naples PD is closely coordinating with NCH downtown and has already engaged in planning efforts with North Collier if necessary for traffic control. And again, we want to stress to individuals, you have to have a referral to go to that site. Do not drive through, don't rush the hospital. You're not going to get seen without a doctor's referral. And the goal there, of course, is to do this sampling outside of a controlled facility. Social distancing has already been mentioned over at the Growth Management Division with their walk-in traffic as well, and, and to the extent possible, continue to move business operations to the best of their ability.
Quick question in reference to community development. I know some communities have actually put up Plexiglas and things like that to kind of separate the public from the people at the counters, and I know at, at our community development offices, large numbers of people, I'm not sure how that would be today, but in the past, anyway, large numbers of people will be in the waiting room, and there'll be people standing in line, and they'll go right up to the counter, and there'll be almost no separation between the, the individual behind the counter. So I want to make sure that, that if we do, assuming that we're going to continue our building permit applications and those types of plans reviews and that sort of thing, but I want to make sure that our employees are protected from the public and the public's protected from our employees. So is there any effort to put any kind of screening up?
We would not say screening at this point, Mr. Chair, but what we are doing is, is updating our website so that we can have more folks do it electronically. And we're also doing a drop-off where we are limiting the contact with individuals. Facilities has also offered the opportunity for us to do extra cleaning, so we're doing that every 30 minutes as we cycle through, so that's enhanced cleaning opportunities. And as you know, when you come to our desk, it's roughly 30 to 36 inches, so we've got a barrier between ourselves and the, and the applicant to be able to practice that social distancing.
All right, so you're comfortable that there's enough separation?
Yes, sir, and we've got hand sanitizers throughout. The other thing we've done is moved our kiosk to the lobby so that folks are not circulating through the building, and we're putting up signs that says, "Beyond this point, authorized personnel only," again, to restrict the number of folks who are coming through. So we believe between our planned drop-off, where you just drop those off, and then we're able to retrieve them, that limits the interaction. Our kiosk limits the interaction. You're able to hand sanitize as you touch the kiosk, so that limit, you know, has transmission. And then we think the separation that we have at our counter will be sufficient at this point. As well as going electronic, and we've got a list that we'll be putting up on all of the services we provide that you can do electronically.
Okay. And that's, that sort of precaution should be taken anywhere where we have contact with the public and our staff to make sure that the, both sides of that equation are protected.
Thank you, sir. On the emergency management side of the house, just a quick refresher, our Emergency Operations Center partners, Florida Division of Emergency Management, is fully activated around the clock. We continue to maintain close conversations with them, literally around the clock. The state's logistical supply center in Orlando has been stood up for commodity distribution. We continue to work closely with DOH and certainly the sheriff under our comprehensive emergency management plan, and we continue to build. We have a good framework, but this is certainly fluid. It's a little bit different, it's a little bit nervous, but we're pulling a lot of our tactical objectives together. We had a teleconference this morning with about 60 players within the community, public safety and local government. Again, our efforts at, at the 5,000-foot level include identifying resource shortfall, doing long-range planning, sharing best practices, and making sure that we're within the Stafford Act framework moving forward. And again, lots of, the Stafford Act, as you know, is the reimbursement. And again, lots of, the Stafford Act, as you know, is the reimbursement grant. And there are a lot of rules and regulations and business processes that we're waiting on FDEM to flush out in the meantime. Just a couple of things that we're working on. We're paying attention to the concern about extended food service operations for certain communities if that's needed. And I have a slide to mention about Collier Schools' phenomenal support there. We're addressing ordering of supplies with PPE and what we call single portal requesting, and that's coming through my office. We'll make those single portal requests through the state DOC. We continue to work remotely, as I've mentioned. And again, we just continue to stress that these websites are available to you. I call it community information. It was referenced as rumor control before. Walmart Publix are not shutting down any supply chains. Florida Division of Emergency Management has been in close contact with all of our major retail players. They're working just as fast as they can. There's no closure, and actually, there have been waivers given for extended hours in truck-tractor operations. Mosquitoes don't transmit COVID. I've mentioned already the drive-through discussions at NCH. And Collier Schools will continue food service at 27 sites in a boxed lunch, grab-and-go-type operation. And Dr. Patton and I and her staff communicated, we were leaning, we have continued with an order of shelf-stable meals to the state to have on standby. We're working with our Amakli partners to do that. But right now, that school site, and that's not just Amakli, but 27 sites around Collier County. Right now, the intent is to continue that breakfast, lunch, or lunch/dinner, box-type lunch environment is extended to go on with no sunset given at this particular point in time. But we're ordering some contingency meals as always.
So, that will be, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, but-
Yes.
So, when you're giving these boxed lunches, a lot of the people in the East Naples area, of course, are salary people, I mean, are hourly people. And if their business is closed, they can't get any money to feed their families. Will they be eligible to do this, then?
Now, this is for schoolchildren. This is my understanding that it is associated with the school lunch program. So, I do not have any particular information to say other than we have been in touch with a number of our nonprofit food banks, and they are working. They're very much aware of this particular demand at this point in time, and they're working very closely to fill those needs.
Okay, so I'll continue then, and that's interesting because I've been, I know everybody keeps talking about closing all the businesses, but you're going to be putting a lot of people out of work, and how are we going to feed those people, as long as you're on that same subject?
Let me kind of interrupt for just a quick second. We're not closing any businesses.
I know, people have been talking about it, that's what I mean.
I just want to make sure that the public doesn't hear that we are closing businesses. We are not closing private businesses. We're dealing with county services.
And, you know, that's great to have on the record so that people can hear that. That needs to be mentioned. Also, I've got a couple more questions. And one of them is, being that it's allergy season, do you have a lot of people come in who really don't have, they have the symptoms, but they're of allergies rather than the virus? Do you have that seeming to be happening?
In terms of that trend, let me ask Stephanie Vick to address that, if she's seen any related trends.
For sure, that is something that has been happening at the Health Department, people calling with symptoms like that, that they have no other risk factors. And it could possibly be allergy, it could possibly be flu symptoms. But they have to meet the criteria that has been set out by the CDC at this point in time in order to qualify for testing.
Okay, that's, I understand that. Have you, I have been reading, I don't know that this is true, but I would love to ask you guys. It says that heat and humidity will kill this virus as we get warmer, we figure that these viruses will die just because of the heat and the humidity that we have down here in southwest Florida.
Well, that is a-
My understanding is that there is no evidence at all at this point in time that heat will have any impact on this virus. It is too early to make that determination. And to say otherwise would be simply spreading a rumor that is not correct.
And you are correct.
All right.
You did it in a short time, and I would have taken just a little bit longer to explain that, but-
Commissioner Fial, do you have any other questions?
No, I have to go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I believe right now that County Manager would like to bring up his discussion in terms of some recommendations to the board regarding operations. Mr. Trevis?
And prior to that, if I might, I know we have all the constitutional officers in the audience. I don't know if anyone from the Sheriff's Department or from Supervisor for Elections. No, I understand, the Sheriff's here, the Supervisor for Elections. We have representatives from all of the constitutional officers, including the Clerk's Office. Prior to our starting to make some recommendations on county operations, did any of you want to make any request or presentations? Or are you coordinating with the manager so he has what you need? All right, come on up. Let's go ahead and do that, because it's going to be part of the list of things.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Jennifer Edwards. I am your Supervisor of Elections. As of right now, there will be an election tomorrow. We have been in constant communication with the Department of State, the Division of Elections, the Florida Department of Health, the Florida Division of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, and our local Health Department, as well as our local Emergency Operations Center. Per their recommendations, we have purchased hand sanitizer for each of our early voting locations, which ended on Saturday, as well as our Election Day locations tomorrow, which is 59 locations. We also have wipes that will be used by our election workers to wipe down the equipment and tables and other things in the room. On March 10, we received notice regarding Executive Order Number 20-52 that was issued by the Governor. And on March 11, we received an emergency order Number 20002 that also was issued by Director Moskowitz from the Florida Division of Emergency Management. As a result, two of our Election Day polling locations have withdrawn from the election due to the assisted-living facilities being located within their community. Those locations are Precinct 416, Warrings Park Clubhouse, and Precinct 222, Bentley Village East Clubhouse. Now, Precinct 416, Warrings Park voters will vote at Faith Lutheran Church that's located at 4150 Goodlett Road. And Precinct 222, Bentley Village, will vote at Grow Church at 15300 Tamiami Trail North. And we appreciate the help from those two locations. Over 80 of our election workers have excused themselves from working tomorrow. So, our staffing will be reduced at all of our polling locations. So, if there are lines, please be patient with us. But think about it, it's a short ballot, and we think the whole process will move very quickly. So, that concludes my comments. Do you have any questions?
Mr. McDaniel has a question?
As a quick reminder, you and I know this, but just remind folks that tomorrow's election requires people to actually go to their own individual precinct. They can't just go to one-
Correct.
-as it was in early voting, so.
Right, and they can go to our website, callyervotes.com, or just call our office at Call Your Votes, and we'll be glad to assist them. We are getting calls today about where they're to vote, and they need to take a signature and photo identification. And the list of those also are on our website. And the polls are open from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 tomorrow night.
All right, so the elections will go on as normal?
This is the Presidential Preference Primary Election. Okay, any other?
A very, very important election in the city of Naples.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sheriff Rambo, I know, I don't know if you have anything specific. I do have a couple of questions for you, if you-
Good afternoon. For the record, Kevin Rambo, Collier County Sheriff. Just as a quick update for you, this is obviously high-peak season for us, all normal activity and responsibilities. We're just finishing up on spring break, which has added responsibilities for us, and then add in COVID-19 preparations, planning. We actually engaged in January to start that process. Since that time, we've not only done policy implementation, purchasing, but created a task force, which then led into an incident management team where we create an incident report, action report, each and every period. We started for a week at a time. We're down to now four days at a time, and it involves all of normal operations, the jail, and the court system, so. But some of the information that you might be interested in is that any day at this time or period of the season, we're between 1,100 and 1,200 calls for service per day. We are at the high end of that as we speak this last five to seven days. We have had a total of 229 cases of disturbances. There has been a significant increase in the last few days at stores throughout the county. We have also had requests from many of our stores in the county to provide off-duty detail deputies at those locations, which we're trying to do if it fits in with our staffing plan. We're also working, as Dan said, with the hospital and the city of Naples and their drive-through operations. We're looking at working with the school system. I've been in constant communication with Cam Patton relative to, how do we keep our kids safe in the next extended period of time and week? I will get into it, but we're looking specifically at online safety because as we ask our young people to not get together, they're going to be using more online opportunities. So, we're actually putting together a release to go out with the school system to address not only general safety for our kids, but also some of the online safeties. We have had a 20% increase in medical calls over the last week and a half. That's not that abnormal for high-peak season. That ebbs and flows, but something that you might be wanting to be aware of. The last thing is, we are getting a lot of visitation from the East Coast as they're closing down beaches on the East Coast. This morning, we have been talking to a lot of people on the beach, and there are a lot of people from out of county who believe it is safer here to recreate than it is where they have come from. So, we're trying to deal with that right now, and we'll be working with your county manager's office to ensure how we go ahead and move forward with that. Even trying to get, you know, social distancing not working today on the beaches. That I can tell you.
Mr. Taylor?
Sheriff Rambo, so they have closed the beaches on the East Coast?
Yes, South Beach particularly, and I guess they're looking at more. That's what we've been told.
From Broward?
I haven't heard from Broward yet.
Wow. That's the center.
Commissioner Solis?
Well, that-
Are you finished?
Yes.
Commissioner Solis?
That was going to be my question, but I've got some other questions for staff, but-
Commissioner Fial, you have some questions for Sheriff Rambo?
Yes, just one, actually. Have you been contacted by the city of Marco Island or people on Marco Island who want to close off Marco Island?
We've not been contacted by people who want to close off Marco Island, but I can tell you that the city of Naples, police and fire, Marco Island, police and fire, all fire districts, we have been in constant communication with for the last several weeks.
Thank you very much.
Sheriff Rambo, in terms of assistance from the county, is there anything you need from us? I know you've got your operations well in hand, but is there any, and you're working with the county manager. Is there anything that you need from the county commission in particular?
No, sir, not at this time. We are in constant communication and with everybody at every level and the state. So, when we have a question, we ask, and we're all working together to make it work.
All right, great, thank you. There are other constitutional officers here, and anybody have any?
Thank you, Commissioner Crystal Kenzel, Clerk of Courts. Right now, the courts are operating, but we are not holding jury trials until March 27 under administrative court order, so jurors can recover at home, hopefully come back healthy in April. But the courts are open, our satellites are open, and our office is open right now.
In terms of the judicial process, county commission has no involvement in that?
Correct, that was mostly for the public's awareness, so.
Anything else?
Ray is here, I don't know if he's got anything from the tax collector.
Come on up.
Larry Ray, the tax collector. We don't have very much, we're working as we normally do, but they have extended, the governor extended driver's license for 30 days. If your license expires, you get 30 more days to do it. So, that'll, should keep people away from the offices for a month, hopefully. We're trying to get, and we posted that on our website. They're trying to drive people to online stuff, which would be a good idea. We've got things posted, the latest DHS and V notifications posted on the doors of all of our offices. The state still runs a few driver's license offices over in the East Coast, and they suspended drivers' tests in their state offices. So, I took that as an indication, maybe that's a good idea. So, I've extended, I have suspended drivers' testing in an automobile through 15 April right now because you've got two people in a close environment that don't know each other and don't know where each other's been, and there's a lot of uneasiness amongst our people. So, we've just done that. And we'll post anything we hear. DOR's meeting to talk about, do we, you know, the good news is 95.6% of the property tax has been collected. Do we extend the delinquency date? I don't know, we'll see. They're meeting at 3:00. If they do, we will. I'll let you know.
And you do not need anything from us?
I do not need anything from you that I'm aware of. I'll let you know if I do.
Mr. Taylor, do you have another question?
Not with our tax collector.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see, do we have any registered speakers?
I do not have any registered speakers, so let's know, sir.
I have one more addition, which is from the Naples Senior Center. If we could put that letter on the visualizer. And if I may just- So, I'll just start reading it. If I may read this, may I read this?
I tell you, we all have it, I don't know if you want to read the entire letter.
Just to allow the public to know, number one, that they are the central address for senior services, but right now, there's no dementia or respite programs. On-site socialization has been canceled for two weeks. They will deliver food to seniors. They also have a pantry that's open for younger families, so by appointment. So, it's, so there are those services out there. Also, they are calling the seniors that are registered with their center daily to check in because depression, isolation can really take a toll on seniors. They will visit if they need to, and then they're doing conference calls and social media to promote activities and contact. They are available for the government and for the public. It doesn't always have to be the folks that are registered with them. So, it's just to let them know that they- So it's just to let them know that they are ready and waiting to serve the seniors in our community.
All right, and for the public, is there a telephone number?
I asked the County Manager to adjust it. It's right across the top there.
325-4444.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, anything else?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Oaks?
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As kind of introduction to this part of this meeting, part of the purpose of this meeting, not only to inform the public as to what's going on, but more significantly, I think, in terms of this meeting, is to determine how we're going to go forward over the next 60 to 90 days, and perhaps even beyond that. So we're going to be making some decisions today that will affect county operations going forward.
Thank you, sir. And on that note, and based on the information available to us at the current time from federal, state, and local agencies, I'm going to ask the board to consider taking a few actions here today that we can go over, starting with the two that are on your slide right now. The first would be for the board to consider authorizing the County Manager to continue with maintenance of normal county government operations to the greatest extent practical. And also, of course, while fully adhering to all CDC, state, and local Department of Health directives and guidance, this would include, if need be, canceling, postponing, limiting events of 50 or more people on government properties for the next eight weeks. That's consistent with the most recent guidance that we've received from the CDC. And then also to consider delegating to me the authority to order closures of what we would deem high-risk public facilities, for example, gymnasium, fitness centers, maybe community centers if need be. So I'm asking for the board to consider that delegation as we move forward here. The next would be to authorize the Manager's Office to take necessary actions to cancel, postpone, or limit public meetings of the Board and other quasi-judicial boards and commissions, other advisory boards and committees for the next 30 days. The thinking there is that I would work with Chairman Saunders to go through that calendar of meetings and make determinations, you know, based on his recommendations and input from staff on which one of those, or which ones of those we could deem nonessential, and then, you know, either postpone or cancel outright if need be. Dan, can you move that next slide for me? Thank you. Just two more. The next one would be authorizing the Manager to take whatever actions are necessary to maintain the continuity of county operations, including the authority to enter into all contracts for goods and services until further directed by the Board. As you know, we're limited as a staff under your procurement policy to authorizing contracts through a specified dollar threshold. This would provide additional latitude to enter into those agreements under the circumstances that we're facing today in order to maintain continuity of operations. And finally, Commissioners, just authorizing my office to take whatever measures are necessary to continue to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our county workforce, and this would include any actions that we would need to take to keep our employees in what I call full pay status due to the need to modify work schedules and approve absences as they relate to the COVID-19 situation. So those are my preliminary recommendations, Commissioners, for your consideration.
You had four items there. Why don't we just go through each one at a time?
Okay.
And we do have a proposed resolution that I think captures most of that, if not all of it, but...
I think so too, sir. I just wanted to point them out individually, and you're right. I think with the few modifications that the County Attorney's going to talk to you about on the resolution, we could capture and codify all of this into the resolution.
All right, let's talk about number one. Commissioner Solis?
Just to understand a little better what closing facilities, gymnasiums, and things like that means, in light of what I heard from the sheriff about closing the beaches on the East Coast and that causing an influx of beachgoers here, that seems to me to be a pretty big concern, especially if they're coming from Broward and Dade, where the numbers seem to be picking up speed. What all is that going to cover specifically in terms of the North Regional Park? Just can you explain a little better what we're doing?
Well, sir, the thought process there was that if we had areas of what we're deeming high risk for contagion or public exposure to the virus, working with Stephanie Vick's office, try to make some specific recommendations on shutting some of those things down. I know fitness centers is an area that is kind of known for that. So we operate probably a half dozen of those in our various community centers and parks, so that would be something we'd want to evaluate. I'm not saying I would close them all down tomorrow, but I would like to have the latitude to do that in consultation with Stephanie and Dan and Steve Carnell and his Parks and Recreation Staff if we think it's appropriate.
What's the status of, say, Little League, Pop Warner? Have all of those organizations already voluntarily suspended their...
To my knowledge, sir, most of them have, yes. I'm not aware of any, frankly, that haven't voluntarily canceled at this point. I'll ask Steve to come up and speak to that directly, but most of them have canceled on their own. But, you know, the parks themselves are still open, and anybody that wants to come and kick a ball in the field or something, certainly we're open for that.
But no organized functions of any kind?
Steve?
Yeah, Steve Carnell, for the record. Just to clarify County Manager's statement, we have almost 30 leagues that we are in contract with at one or more parks, and we've not heard from every single one of them to his answer, but everyone we've heard from so far is canceling or awaiting direction from us. So right now, we're going to, we're pretty much expecting all league play will be shut down here in a few days, barring a change in direction. And the parks themselves will remain open for general public use.
I mean, I would think it would be a good idea to go ahead and notify them that they need to do that today.
All right, let's see if there's a consensus of the board. These are some difficult decisions. The direction you're looking for is to, in terms of organized sporting activities, Little League and all, that our parks are not going to be open for that until further notice. Is that...
That's correct.
Does everyone agree with that? Commissioner McDaniel, what's your thought on that? You know, let me, as you're thinking, because I'm...
I'm not thinking, well, I'm trying to gather my words. I mean, if you have something to say, go ahead. I mean, I'll reserve my time.
Okay, I was going to give you a little respite there in terms of making your thoughts. None of these decisions that we're going to make today are going to be easy ones. And I think the issue from my perspective is, I'd rather be wrong on the side of being a little overly restrictive than being wrong on the side of not being restrictive enough. I hate to say to a Little League team, can't play a Little League game here. On the other hand, it does bring a lot of kids together and their parents and grandparents, and I think I agree with Commissioner Solis that we need to not have any organized play like that. Parks can be open for families to go out and, as was said, kick a ball, but I'd rather err on the side of being overly conservative than the other way. So that was my comment that I just wanted to make, as you were thinking in terms of your position there.
And you know, there again, and I appreciate you allowing me that respite. It's certainly untried turf for all of us. And I would prefer that we err on the side of being conservative, but on the same token, it's, you know, there's an overreaching and almost contradictory. I'd like to talk a little bit about this language, just from postponing of all government-owned properties. The specification of government is the question that I have. Where are we with regard to that? I mean, this is an eight-week closure, and that's, people view us as all as one. And so, I mean, does this include the school districts?
No, I'm sorry. I should have put Board of County Commissioners' facilities or properties.
And so, and so that language specifically is on government properties for the next eight weeks, and that's where... And again, I haven't had an opportunity to read the actual written ordinance that we're going to vote on.
Oh, it's a good catch. Good, that is a good catch. We're talking about only county facilities, county programs. We're not talking about...
We're not certainly talking about private sectors or private businesses, restaurants, or anything along those lines, so it's just the government's way of extending cautious efforts.
Telling families and kids to stay at home as much as possible. Commissioner Fiala?
Yes. Only a little bit of puzzlement for me. Again, I've been reading, and they say that for some phenomenon, that kids don't seem to be getting this virus, but of course, parents could, but definitely the elderly do. And that might play into whatever decision we're going to be making.
Yeah, I think that in our Health Department, Stephanie Vick is going to talk here in a second, but kids do get the virus, and they don't get symptoms from it necessarily, and if they do get symptoms, they're extremely mild, but they do transmit it to people that are around them.
Why do you need me? So... Well, that, to reinforce what he's saying, yes, kids do get it. You might not even know they have it, but who knows who they go home to? Are their grandparents taking care of them? Are they staying with their grandparents for a short period of time? They can, even though they don't have real symptoms, a lot of them, they can transmit.
And Commissioner Fiala, there is apparently some of the newer evidence at this point is that this is not just old people and older, sick people that get this disease and suffer from it. Healthy people in their 40s are getting it and suffering from it. So the issue becomes, do we basically require the social distancing that we've been talking about? So we need to make a kind of a decision on how we proceed with those types of activities. Commissioner Hale, did you have something else? Commissioner Hale?
Yeah, we're talking about organized children's sports, and I'm really betwixt and between because school is out. There's no school. But at the same time, I think I would support that, that I think the elephant in the room is the beaches. The beaches. I think that's my, when I listened to what our sheriff said about Miami Dade coming over here to use our beaches, and social distancing isn't part of their conduct, I am very concerned about that. So I'll leave that for a moment, and we'll come back to that.
All right, let's just see what the consensus is. Commissioner Fiala, have you arrived at a conclusion as to how you feel about that particular issue? The county parks, not the beaches, nothing dealing with private businesses, but just how we proceed with our county parks?
Okay, and I just have one little question there. Does that mean the county-sponsored groups there, or are any groups that generally go to our parks and pay us to use them?
My understanding would be it would be any groups that use our parks. Both.